All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Burke County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for Tuesday, June the 19th, 2018. I would ask you to silence your mobile devices. If you have mobile devices with you tonight, please turn those to vibrate or cut them off so that they do not interrupt our meeting. Remind you that if you have presentations to make tonight, come to the podium where the microphone is located. Be sure you turn it on so that we can hear you and the folks on the Internet and television can hear you also. Madam Clerk, we have our county attorney with us tonight, manager clerk. Commissioner Ablie is out of town on a meeting trip and Commissioner Taylor is absent tonight. That leaves the three of us. The quorum is present and accounted for. All right. At this time, we'll have our invocation. We're delighted to have with us tonight Pastor Ed Stevenson with Arne's Fairview United Methodist Church. Let's all stand together for the invocation and then we'll have the pledge.
God of us all, we grateful to you for the privilege of being where we are tonight, for doing what we do. Lord, I lift this commission of men and women up to you, these people who have given of themselves to look over the polity and the machinations of this county, and they do it so well, Lord. We ask that you give them a double helping of your grace, a double helping of your wisdom, and we're all reminded, Lord, that agreeing and loving are not always the same thing. Not to be remiss, Lord, we take this opportunity to thank you, to say thank you to those who stand behind me, who wear the caps of the armed services of our country. We thank you, Lord, for their service, even as we thank you for this commission's work. Without them, Lord, many of us would not be here this evening. Father, we just thank you for the opportunities that you give us. We thank you and we just ask that you be with us tonight as perhaps never before. Thank you for those who receive the awards, Lord, and those who will be honored and recognized. We make our plea. We offer our prayer. In his most precious name, that of our Savior Jesus, amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor, again for being here and leading us in our invocation. We're delighted also tonight to have Girl Scout Troop 2023 under the leadership of April Buchanan. And girls, come forward and lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just hang right there for a moment. We're gonna come down, make a picture. All right, this brings us to item number four on our agenda tonight, approval of agenda. Gentlemen, there've been a few modifications in the agenda. You've had an opportunity to see all those. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it has been amended.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you Scott. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That's all of us, Madam Clerk. Item five is approval of meeting minutes. Gentlemen, you have before you minutes of the May 1st, 2018 Board of Commissioners' pre-agenda meeting, May the 15th Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, and May the 21st, 2018 Board of Commissioners' recessed meeting. Would entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes as written or amended.
All right, thank you Scott. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Brings us to item six, presentations. Western Piedmont Community College has a special recognition tonight. This will be presented by Dalton Walters, First Vice President for the college. Walter, good to see you tonight.
Guess I'm still on. Commissioners, thank you for having me. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Dalton Walters. I'm the Vice President of the Western Piedmont Foundation. On behalf of the Western Piedmont Foundation Board of Directors, I'm honored to present the 2017 Alumnus of the Year Award. Each year, the foundation recognizes an alumnus who has given unselfishly of their time and talents to advance the mission and goals of Western Piedmont Community College and our community. I am pleased to present the 2017 Alumnus of the Year Award this year to Stephanie Norman. Stephanie was a young mother raising two children and working full-time when she decided to enroll at Western Piedmont in an effort to earn a degree and attain financial security for herself and her family. Stephanie made a financial sacrifice and committed to attending Western Piedmont as a full-time student. One of her nominators shared that Stephanie took advantage of the staff, services, and academics at Western Piedmont. They gave her a strong education foundation and prepared her for a four-year college and graduate school. After obtaining an Associate of Arts degree from Western Piedmont in 1997, Stephanie enrolled at UNC Asheville, driving from Morganton to Asheville five days a week for three years. During this time, Stephanie's youngest child was diagnosed with both autism and a rare medical condition. Despite these challenges, Stephanie persevered and earned a bachelor's degree in psychology from UNC Asheville in 2000. Informed by both her personal experiences and formal education, Stephanie embarked on a 15-year career in mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance abuse, becoming a strong advocate for individuals with disabilities. She served as a Foothills Area Program Case Manager for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, then as a program coordinator for the Medicaid waiver program through Mental Health Partners for Burke and Catala Counties. She facilitated trainings for local agencies that provided services for intellectual and developmental disabilities. She also served as liaison for Burke and Catala Counties with the NC Division of Medical Assistance and the NC Division of Mental Health, developmental disabilities, and substance abuse services. Stephanie became supervisor for Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Care Coordination under Partners Behavioral Health Management and served Burke and Catala Counties. Ongoing challenges in the mental health field encouraged Stephanie to further her education. She enrolled in Appalachian State University's Master of Public Administration program in 2011. A year into her studies, she was diagnosed with Graves' disease, an autoimmune disorder that causes her body's immune system to attack her thyroid. She took a break from graduate school until her health was stabilized and then re-enrolled after a year despite experiencing challenging complications from her thyroid treatments. She drove to Winston-Salem two nights a week while working full-time and obtained her Masters in Public Administration in December of 2015. Stephanie decided to change her career direction and was elected Burke County Register of Deeds in 2016. Since taking office, she has focused on improving customer service through the better use of technology and making information readily available to the public as quickly and efficiently as possible. Her husband shared in his nomination submission that some of the challenges with her health were not easily overcome, but in true Stephanie Norman fashion, she looked at it as a challenge to move forward. He said, "My wife looks for the learning opportunity in each adverse situation she encounters." She believes the difficult times in life should help us appreciate when things are going smoothly. She also believes that you must decide whether you will allow your adverse experience to make or break you, and she believes that you must remind yourself that adversity is part of life. Accepting adversity helps you overcome it. Adversity developed her strong character and helped her find her voice. It also helped her to be adaptable in any situation. Certainly, her determination, adaptability, and drive to help others has supported her in her current role as a public servant. In recognition of her exemplary service and leadership, I'm honored to introduce Western Piedmont Community College's 2017 Outstanding Alumnus, Stephanie Norman.
Stay right there Dalton. This thing right there, let's let the board come down and get a picture with you.
I don't really know what to say other than thank you, and I'm truly humbled by this honor. And if it's a reality and it's your dream, you can do it. Sometimes you just have to keep at it, even when life gets in the way and obstacles get in the way, but if you keep at it, you can do whatever you want to do. And so, thank you for letting me be your Register of Deeds and thank you for this honor.
Thank you again. And Dalton, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate you making this presentation. This brings us to scheduled public hearings tonight. We have a number of public hearings. First one will be presented by our county manager, adoption of the fiscal year 1819 budget and public hearing. First, I will open the public hearing to receive comments. Anyone here tonight to speak to this item, the county budget for fiscal year 1819? Seeing no one present, Madam Clerk, I'll close the public hearing and ask for any questions of the commissioners before I entertain a motion. Hear none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt fiscal year 1819 budget ordinance number 2018-06.
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the Burke County Board of Commissioners, I move to adopt the fiscal year 1819 budget ordinance number 2018-06 for the general fund, the school half-sent capital outlay fund, the school one-sent capital outlay fund, the emergency telephone system fund, the fire districts fund, the water and sewer fund, the solid waste disposal fund, and the solid waste collection fund as presented. I also move to approve a memorandum of agreement between Burke County and the Burke County Board of Education for the fiscal year 1819. And I also move to authorize the county manager to execute contracts with all nonprofit agencies that receive funding in the fiscal year 1819 budget in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 153A-449 and North Carolina General Statute 159-40.
All right, thank you gentlemen. Gentlemen, you've heard the motion. I'll call for a vote at this time. All those in favor, as Johnny has read, please signify by the uplifted hand. Madam Clerk, that'd be three to zero. This brings us to item number two, BDI, amended local economic development grant for Project Engines and public hearing. This will be presented tonight by Alan Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, manager, county attorney, and madam clerk. This is an amended agreement for Project Engines that had been presented earlier. There was some clarification needed on the amount of investment and the term of the grant. So, this is a multi-tiered agreement and it's depending on investment. The first phase is at eight to 10 million dollars. As you will see, that would offer incentive of 65% of new tax base for six years. If they hit 10 million to 20, it extends it to seven years at 70%. If it goes above 20 million, then it becomes eight years at 75%. So, this was needed to clarify that presentation. The jobs number has stayed the same at 94, and I will say that this company is already here and functioning in Burke County, doing exactly what we anticipated they would do when we first visited this project.
All right, thank you Alan. Gentlemen, any questions for Alan before I open the public hearing? Hear none, then I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone here tonight to speak to this matter? Seeing and hearing no one, Madam Clerk, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve an amended economic development grant based on the proposed tiered incentive rate of 65% of the new capital investment of approximately eight million but less than 10 million for six years, an incentive rate of 70% of the new capital investment of at least 10 million but less than 20 million for seven years, an incentive rate of 75% of the new capital investment of at least 20 million for eight years, and the creation of at least 94 new jobs by the end of the calendar year 2020.
All right, thank you Scott. Gentlemen, you've heard this motion. I'll take a vote at this time. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by the uplifted hand. Madam Clerk, that's three to zero. All right, thank you Alan. Item number three is again from BDI, building reuse grant and local economic development grant for Project JP3 and public hearing. And Alan, if you'll give us some information.
This is a project that would be going into a currently vacant building, creation of 40 new jobs, and an estimated $11.5 million of new capital investment. What we are doing is we are requesting an application to be submitted for a building reuse grant based upon the creation of those jobs. This would be submitted by Burke County but also supported by the city of Morganton. We will be on their agenda in July. We're looking to submit this application in June 28th so it could be approved at the August 23rd, a meeting of the Rural Infrastructure Authority. There is a $100,000 one NC that is separate from this. That's a one North Carolina grant that we are also looking to submit. That does require a 50% local match. That match would come from what we're proposing, which is a 50% grant back of new taxable base created by this project. What we're saying, as I said, is estimated that this would be an investment of $11.5 million, and we're looking for that for five years. Year one of that grant would cover the required match for the $100,000 one NC, which is 50% of the grant amount. So, what we estimate is that between the county and the city of Morganton's local grant that we cover that match, so that's all that would be required of that. This doesn't really affect the local incentives, but I wanted to make you aware that we are applying for a grant from the Golden Leaf Foundation that would assist with their leasing of equipment. That money would come back through BDI. We would purchase the equipment, lease it to the company, and they would pay those funds back to us. And we're not real sure exactly what the term of that lease is. We're looking at probably seven years, and we're following Golden Leaf's stipulation on what the repayment would look like. So, once that happens, that money comes back to BDI, and we would have it for future use for similar projects as that came about.
All right, thank you Alan. Gentlemen, we've had this information previously and had an opportunity to discuss it, but before I open the public hearing, any questions for Alan? All right, hear none at this time, I'll open the public hearing on this matter. Anyone here to speak to this matter tonight? Seeing and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt resolution number 208-15 and approve an appropriation of $12,500 of the general fund fund balance for the county's portion of the building reuse local grant match pending notification of a grant award for Project JP3. I also move to approve a grant administration contract with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments pending the building reuse grant award, and I also move to approve the recommended local economic development grant equivalent to 50% of taxes paid on the new taxable investment for five years based on an estimated investment of $1.5 million.
All right, thank you Johnny. And duly closing the public hearing, Madam Clerk, I'll entertain a vote at this time. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by the uplifted hand. Madam Clerk, that's three to zero. Thank you Alan, appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate your support.
All right, this brings us to item number eight, informal vote of comments tonight. Madam Clerk, anyone here to speak tonight?
Mr. Chairman, we have two speakers tonight. I'd start with Mr. Jack Carroll.
Evening, Mr. Carroll.
Great evening to all of you. Glad to be here and have a little talk with you. Of course, you know why I'm here and some of these other members back there are here for the same reason. I'm hoping that we'd be able to discuss in a civil manner about the memorial, place to put that memorial somewhere in Burke County. Our first goal is to put it on the old courthouse, if not, then the current courthouse. So, I don't understand why we can't come to some agreement to you all to give us permission to do that. It doesn't cost anything, it's free, and personally, I'm not a resident, a native of Burke County, and some of these other guys sitting back behind me are not a native of Burke County, they come from other parts of state and other parts of the country. We're doing this because we want to do something, honor those people that died in this war. And I don't know how you feel about it, but we've talked about it quite a bit, and I don't know if you have any questions about it or not, but that's the extent of it, what I want to say. And if we can't work something out with an agenda item in July to have this voted up or down, we're prepared to take other steps down the line. And the only other option that we will have is 2020, we'll have election, three people up for reelection run again or whatever. I don't want to do that. We shouldn't have to go to that extent, but we will go to the public in 2020 if this doesn't happen. We have all these veterans that work very hard, put in a lot of time. I've put in, I guess I started this really back 10 years ago, and I couldn't imagine or couldn't come up with a number of the times I put in to this project. I just want to see those names on the memorial. So, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. I'd be happy to meet with you, and some of those guys will be happy to meet with you and any commissioners that you want to ask questions with, get further details if you like, but that's what we plan to do. And I hate to say that we have to go to the public on our elected officials on a matter like this because it doesn't cost a taxpayer money. In fact, taxpayers of this county send in to you guys over $45 million every year of their money. That's their money they send to you. And I'm not asking from funds right now, but of course, if a spot is located and we go forward with it, of course, we'll come back and ask for help on it. So, that's all I have to say on it, and if you have any questions, I'll certainly try to answer them for you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carroll. Of course, public comment time is not time for open discussions, but we'll certainly be glad to continue that conversation with you and see if there's some way we can assist in that matter.
I don't want to have to go to the extent, you know, going out and talking about our people who have been elected, especially our county commissioner, or the city council. We shouldn't have to do that from people, and it doesn't cost either one any money. And just give a permission and we'll do the rest. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Ms. Linda McIntosh?
Thank all of you so much. In the 1960s, and I remember that date, I was the Burke County Veterans Service Officer. And during that time, I serviced for three Civil War widows. 1960s, remember that. Also, I had serviced for the Spanish-American veterans, and that was 1898, the Spanish-American War. In World War I, we had many, many veterans that would come in that had been frozen, but they came home, but they came home to empty homes. Their wives had left them and taken their children, and some of them never saw them again. And then, in World War II, my dad, Gilbert Dill, and his brother, Richard Dill, served in the military, in the Navy, but they came home. My mom's brother, Colin Hall, was in the military, in the Army, and was crossing the Saint River, and he was a radio operator, and he was shot, fell into the river, and never returned home. His parents looked for him until the day he died. My grandmother declared she saw him before she passed, but he didn't come home. But then, we come on down, Mr. Charles Bergen, and a lot of you may have known him, he was a schoolteacher in Valdez High School, probably one of the best teachers I ever had. He was a prisoner of war in World War II. And he would tell us during our class periods, sometimes you could tell that he kind of just went off into a space that we didn't understand, and we still don't understand. And he would pick up things off his desk and he would say, "I was in prison in World War II, and I was put in a little cage, probably the size of this podium." And he said, "They would put me in there and lay my head back, and they would let water drip, one drop at the time, drip, drip, drip." And he said, "I would pray and ask God to relieve me. I would talk to my parents, I would talk to my friends," trying to get over the trauma of this for hours and hours on end. But he didn't get relief. He was finally released, he came home, and because of this, he said, it was so hard for him to believe that there ever was a God. But one of the finest teachers that I ever had. And my uncle Fillmore Brown and another gentleman from Burke County, John Gallion, was in a siege, and the only three people that survived in the entire platoon was John Gallion, my uncle Fillmore Brown, and the captain. The captain lost his mind that day and was an insane asylum for the remainder of his life. My uncle Phil and John Gallion probably should have been because their lives were just totally miserable. They couldn't sleep, they paced, they would take both of them to doctors and hospitals, but they could not get this memory out of their mind. And the main thing that they would talk about was, "All my comrades were killed. All of my comrades were killed. Why did we survive?" And then there was the Korean War, and one of our neighbors, Tommy Chapman, didn't return home. His parents and his siblings looked for him until he died, but he didn't come home. He may come home now because of the things that's happened recently in our government. We had five prisons of war from the Korean conflict in Burke County. Four have died, one is still living, and that's Melvin Taylor and Glenn Alpine. They would come in my office and they would pace, and they would talk to me because their family was so tired of hearing their horrible stories. An attorney, John McMurray, come down one day and said, "Linda, are you okay?" I said, "I'm fine. This man is fine." They would pace and talk to me because I would listen to them. I would listen to them. And then they would say, "But you know, I'm thankful to be home. I survived. My comrades didn't." Eleven years ago, our granddaughter was engaged to a young man by the name of Chris, and he was in Afghanistan. He called one morning and he said, "Stephanie, I love you, and I'll be coming home in four or five weeks." He came home in four or five weeks in a casket, and Stephanie never got over that. I mean, she stayed single for nine years. She graduated from college, we're proud of her, she works in Winston-Salem, but she could not get over Chris losing his life. not get over Chris losing his life. Last year, in Wilkes County, they honored him with a memorial and dedicated it to him, and then dedicated a larger memorial that day to all the veterans that had died from Wilkes County. I would appreciate so much if you would do what you could to help us see that we could get this memorial erected. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McIntosh.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you again, both to all of you guys who've served, and we will continue to try to work with you to help, help on this project. All right, let's go now to item number nine, consent agenda. I'll recognize our county manager, Brian State.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, you have a seventeen item consent agenda. First, Burke County Public Schools' approval of purchase price for school property. Number two, Burke County Public Schools' school construction change order number eight. Item three, clerk appointment to Library Board of Trustees. Item four, clerk reappointment to Drexel Planning Board ETJ. Item five, appointment to Burke County Planning Board. Item six, clerk removal of Parks and Recreation Commission member. Item seven, clerk reappointment to Board of Social Services. Item eight, EMS Medical Director's Contract Renewal. Item nine, finance home and community care block grant fiscal year twenty eighteen dash nineteen. Item ten, finance approval of purchase card application for North Carolina State Procurement Contract number nine four six A Bank of America P dash card program. Item eleven, General Services Solid Waste Division Joyce Engineering Annual Services fiscal twenty eighteen. Item twelve, JCPC removals, reappointments, and appointments to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Item thirteen, NCDOT abandonment of a portion of Old Jamestown Road. Item fourteen, Senior Services American Food Services LLC Contract for Nutrition Program. Item fifteen, tax amendment to Tax Collections Agreement with Hildebrand. Item sixteen, Tax Department Tax Collections Report for May two thousand eighteen. And item seventeen, Tax Department Release Refund Report for May two thousand eighteen. That concludes your consent agenda.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Gentlemen, you've heard the consent agenda as read by county manager. I'll entertain a motion to accept it.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right. Thank you, Scott. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. It's all others, Madam Clerk. Have several items for decision tonight. The first item will come from our clerk, appointment to the Veterans Service Board. This will be presented by Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a request to appoint someone to the Veterans Service Board, which is a five-member advisory board that meets as needed to plan public-related events and provide recommendations on veteran-related issues. You have four applications on file from Kenneth Knapp, Terry Conley, Deborah Horton, or Keith Ogle. This is again for seat number five. It's for the remainder of a three-year term ending September thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Again, it's a good thing to have a number of folks interested in serving on our Veterans Service Board. And so, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion at this time to elect one of these folks to serve.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Kenneth Knapp to the Veterans Service Board, seat number five, for the remaining three-year term.
Thank you, Johnny. Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, I'll entertain a motion to elect Mr. Knapp by acclamation, with that being ordered, Madam Clerk. Why not? Okay. All those in favor say aye? Opposed? No. Okay. All right. Second item comes from our clerk again, appointment to the Western Peamont Community College Board of Trustees. Madam Clerk.
Gentlemen, this is a request to appoint a citizen to seat number two on the Western Peamont Community College Board of Trustees for a four-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. You have three applications on file, Ms. Leann Britton, Jenny Cook, or Rodney Harrelson.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Gentlemen, you've heard of these folks who have applied for appointment to this board. I'll entertain nominations for this seat.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Rodney Harrelson to the Western Peamont Community College Board of Trustees, seat number two, for a four-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Any other nominations for this seat? Hearing none, again, I will entertain a motion then that Mr. Harrelson be appointed by acclamation. All those in favor, signify with the uplifted hand. That'd be all others, Madam Clerk. Item number three comes from our county manager, memorandum of understanding for fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen between the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Division of Social Services and Burke County. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, you're familiar with the state has, by statute, required that there be a contract between the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and the local county departments of social services regarding provisions of service and performance measures. We've discussed this and some issues that we've, we have with this, and have also added to the contract document provided by DHHS, a signing statement that explains some of our concerns and reservations about the contract, memorandum of agreement, whatever they want to call it, for this board to consider and to authorize. They need somebody to be authorized by the Board of County Commissioners to sign the document for Burke County, and it's our recommendation that, since the county manager has no statutory authority over DH or DSS, that the more appropriate person to sign and be authorized to sign the document is the Director of DSS, Ms. Doreen Hernandez, and also the, the document, the signing statement. Of course, this board can act as a board for the county. I believe Mrs. Hernandez wants to take this also before the DSS board for their blessing as well.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Gentlemen, we've had much discussion on this matter previously, and I see that Doreen is here tonight, and I'm sure she'd love to answer lots of questions about this item. So I will ask if you have any questions before we vote on this item. All right, hearing none, you've had the memorandum in front of you to see. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I make a motion, I want to, just for the record, please, the county manager has eloquently stated some of the things that are in this memorandum of understanding. Sometimes the county gets forced into a situation it's not comfortable with. I'm not comfortable with this memorandum of understanding. I don't think DSS is comfortable with this memorandum of understanding. There, I think the News Herald Insurance article on this particular document was, was very good for the public, and I hope they took the time to read what we're expected to do as a county. I don't think the General Assembly sometimes can come out with something that, that fits all one hundred counties, especially when it comes to social services. Each, each social service department does what it can to do what is right for the children of this county, the adults of this county, and they work very hard to do that. And I think a memorandum of understanding that kind of mandates or dictates that certain criteria be met is just not fair. It's not fair at all. And I, I think that's what has been placed in front of us. But with that said, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, Social Services Divisions, and Burke County as presented, and further authorize a social services director to execute the MOU on behalf of the board, as well as execute the signing document.
All right. Thank you, Johnny. Gentlemen, you've heard the motion. All those in favor, please signify with the uplifted hand. Madam Clerk, that's three to zero. This brings us to item number four, again, coming from the county manager, appropriation of fund balance for legal fees. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, we have a normal amount of money that's appropriated for legal services, and during the past year, we've had some additional service requirements and related to the, the county and some outside counsel. I know there was one with the matter with Glenn Alpine that we, we had in the past, as well as some, some additional work that the county attorneys had to do. And so we're asking the board to consider appropriation of up to twenty thousand dollars of the general fund fund balance to cover legal fees through June thirtieth of twenty eighteen.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Gentlemen, any questions for Brian on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appropriate up to twenty thousand dollars of general fund fund balance to cover legal fees through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
All right. Thank you, Scott. All those in favor, signify with the uplifted hand. Madam Clerk, that's three to zero. Brings us to item number five. IT matter, multi-year contract for shared cost in operating records management system. This will be presented by IT Director Steve Bennett. Evening, Steve.
Good evening. Thank you, gentlemen and Madam Clerk. What we have here is a modified agreement from last month's agreement with the town of Valdez and the city of Morganton. After meeting with our colleagues, presented with the initial agreement, they requested some changes, and we met and agreed to those changes, the biggest being changing from a six-year contract to a four, and then changing payment due date, and then more clarifying some of the who gets paid what and when. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Steve. But gentlemen, you should have received this agreement for review. Any questions on this matter? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agreement as presented and authorize the county manager to execute on behalf of the board.
All right. Thank you, Scott. All those in favor, signify with the uplifted hand. Madam Clerk, that's three to zero. This brings us to item eleven, reports and comments tonight. We'll start down there by the fellow that's all alone on the end of the table, our county attorney, Mr. Sins.
No comments from me tonight, but thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, JR. Brian?
No comments, sir. Thank you.
All right, Johnny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My reports are, have been submitted, and I think you've had an opportunity to read those. If I can take a point of personal privilege at this time, I want to say that, that with my heart filled with love for Paul Ives, this is the last time that he will sit there and do a budget for us. I don't know that words, that you can find the words to, to, to recognize Paul for what he's done for Burke County. It's, sometimes you get a calling to do things, and I think Paul probably will admit that he received a calling to be here in this county. Not only has he been a deputy county manager, and not only has he been a finance officer, but Paul has been a friend to every one of us. And you can call him late, you can call him early, and he's always responded to those telephone calls. And when we went through the process of trying to, to get another finance officer, somebody said, "We'll replace Paul. Paul will never be replaced." Somebody will come into his office, and they'll say, "Oh, my God, what happened?" You know, when they see, I don't even know where he's got that stuff. He's not had an opportunity probably to clean up the floor where you can even walk in his office yet. But Paul, from Johnny, I'm going to miss you a lot. You've been, you've been a good friend, and this county should be proud of everything that Paul Ives has, has meant to it and what he's meant to the citizens of this county. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
All right. Thank you, Johnny. Scott?
Well, it's hard to follow that, Paul, so I'll just say, with all the hours that you've put in for the county, I don't know what your hobbies are, but you must have many because you, you've done a great job for us, and I appreciate it. I've learned a lot from you. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
I don't have any comments, and we get a little more time left with Paul, so I'll, I'll save those comments.
Okay. All right. And I'm sure we're, we're going to plan just a fabulous, crazy retirement party for Paul. And we'll put Madam Clerk in charge of that, and I know it'll be out of this world. So anyway, we do appreciate all that Paul has done for us, and understand, and I appreciate Johnny's comments, understand the selfless sacrifice work that, that you've done, and we will say more about that later. My reports are also, comments are, are in the agenda package, the things that, meetings that I have been to and reported on. I don't have anything else tonight. Madam Clerk, we'll hear vacancy announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ladies and gentlemen, we have the following opportunities for citizens to be involved in county boards or committees: the Hickory Regional Planning Commission, the Adult Care and Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, Council on Aging, Aging Regional, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, the City of Morganton Board of Adjustment and Planning Board for the ETJ, the Voluntary Agriculture Board, the Burke County Board of Adjustment and Planning Board, Burke County Parks and Recreation Commission, the Western Peamont Regional Transit Authority Transportation Advisory Board, Partners Behavioral Health Management, the Animal Advisory Board, the Board of Health, the Region E Development Corporation, the Burke Senior Center Advisory Council, and we just filled the vacancy we had on the Western Peamont Board of Trustees.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And again, let me encourage you and citizens who might be listening somewhere else to consider serving on some of these boards and committees. There are lots of good opportunities there, and we need your help to do that. And with that brings us to item thirteen, closed session. We do not have a need for a closed session tonight, so there'll be no closed session. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. All right.